The order here, Monday, October fourteenth, Plan Commission Meeting. Looks like we have a quorum here, and that's good. And the first item on here is consider approval of the minutes from September ninth.
So move.
There's a motion for the minutes, is there a second?
I will second.
Any discussion on the minutes? If you're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed. Next item is Council Representative Report. Is there anything to report back?
Uh, not really much to report back. Everything that went to council passed and was approved. I think we only had, I'm not even sure if we had an abstention for the indoor commercial entertainment use on Main Street because it involved alcohol, but I'm not sure if we had one or not. So everything, the four items that were up for council approval, passed and went smoothly.
Excellent. Anything in the staff report?
Nothing of particular to highlight, but if there's anybody that has questions on the staff review or report, let me know.
Keep looking over here.
Sorry. We're having a technical issue, so I'm sitting here trying to drive from a different location tonight.
All right. Any questions about anything that's in the staff report? Very none, we'll keep moving. Item number five is a request by Mary Wantke for final condominium plot approval for the Goodview condominium, twenty-two oh nine and twenty-two eleven Woodview Drive. Any questions before we get started? Anything you want to highlight?
Just to, just to point out, this was that essentially a two-unit building that was being put into a condominium to accommodate the common elements, water and sanitary sewer infrastructure, the need to do so, so that those can be held in common, since they're separate ownership of each unit in a condominium arrangement.
Any questions? Otherwise, entertain a motion for recommendation to council.
I will vote to approve.
Motion by Tom?
Yeah.
Second by Phil. Okay. Any questions or comments from anyone? If you're none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries. Number six, request by Dvorak Investments to LLC for direct annexation of fifty-one point three-one-five acres of land across the west side of Highway fifty-one North, near County Highway B, from the town of Dunn.
The materials contained in your packet are related to the request. Graphically on the screen, I've, I've got the land that's proposed to be annexed to the city of Stoughton. Just to highlight on the screen, what you see is the area of Highway fifty-one runs essentially north to south along this area. The former bank location on the corner of B and fifty-one is located in this area. On the Leonard Track of Land that's within the city limits is on the bottom right-hand side of the screen, and the area proposed to be annexed is shown as parcel one on, on the graphic on the screen at this point. You'll see materials from the Department of Administration, finding that it's not against the public interest to annex this property, and it's being considered at the request of the property owner to annex this property to the city. Materials related to the comprehensive plan are also located in the packet, and graphically that shows the comprehensive plan, the area on the left-hand side of the screen depicted as an X approximately as the location proposed to be annexed to the city.
Okay. Now, if there are questions or comments, I know Mr. Dvorak is here tonight as well, if you have anything for him.
That home that's, that, so that didn't create an island being kind of sectioned off between fifty-one and then that, that little peninsula in there?
Yeah. It does not create an island. This area here remains open. This particular parcel of land is separate from the annexation parcel. I think the homestead or the home that you're speaking of is on this track of land. This small track of land actually here is owned by the DOT, and then you've got DOT right away here, and this, this area all yet remains in the town of, town of Dunn, actually, yes, correct.
Okay. Any other questions? Guys are quiet tonight.
I don't, I don't have a question, but I, I do have a couple of concerns.
Okay, I can't hear you.
How's that?
I know you want to be heard.
Nice. Can you hear me now?
I can, thank you.
I, I don't have a question, but I have concerns. My concerns are in regards to, well, there's, there's a few of them. The first being is that the, the property owner has just annexed other lands into the city last year and has not acted on them as, as yet that I know of. So adding another fifty-one acres, I'm not seeing the, the need for it at this point in time. Number two, we have a large amount of undeveloped land that's been annexed into the community in the last few years, and my concern is, is that we will, it, it could all develop at the same time where we would outstrip, it would outstrip the ability of the city services to, to keep up with those, with that build, and what it would do to our, the city budget. I, I don't, you know, I understand why people want to annex land, they want to develop it eventually, but this seems like it's premature, and the city doesn't really need to have fifty-some extra acres of land that is not, that is, that is sitting fallow. That's all I got to say.
All right. Did you want us to comment on them, or would you like Mr. Dvorak to come up and share?
If he wants to, if he'd like to say whatever he'd like to.
Good evening, how are you? In regards to the big picture, fifty-one North, our thought is by annexing the two parcels, the one we did last year, and looking at the future growth of Stoughton, as we look at the DOT fifty-one corridor, is, is our concern why we want to kind of get this out in front of everybody to talk about access points, road reconstruction, as the DOT's going into their phases over the next few years, and just get an overall plan, so we don't have the same type of issues that you're presently having with KPW and one thirty-eight and Oak opening and Deer Point Drive. And I'm just trying to be proactive here and, and kind of get this in front of everybody, so everybody knows it's coming at some point in time. So, and I think it fits in with the overall concept of what Stone wants to do in future growth over the next few years. Thank you.
So, just a couple of quick follow-ups, as long as you're up here, Bob. So, do you have a timetable in mind, or, I mean, have you thought, is this a three, five, ten-year plan, or?
It's probably anywhere from seven to ten years to get to that point at least, Tim, out in the corner of being fifty-one.
Okay, because if it, if it is annexed, you still have to go through some other processes, and then you, at that point, you think you would kind of coordinate that with the DOT, is that what I'm hearing?
With the DOT and, and obviously the whole city team as far as, you know, tarpsy and stormwater and, and sanitary, so you can kind of plan the, the whole growth on the north and the northwest side of the city. This isn't something that's going to happen overnight, but I think it's good to communicate now about, about the whole big picture.
So what will happen with that land between now and the next however many years? You think it'll be developed?
Just be farmed at this point until the DOT comes through, and they're going to take, I don't know, six, eight acres when they put the roundabout in the corner of being fifty-one, is their future concept plans. But at this time, our intent is just to farm it and, and start to plan big picture.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Dvorak while he's up here? Or anything else for that matter? Go ahead, Mr. Dvorak.
Thanks, Mayor. Just a comment that I think it makes a lot of sense that with the investment that's going to be made on that highway corridor by the DOT, to have plans for how it integrates with adjacent land uses, so, just so you're not having to double do stuff down the road.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So that land right now, what is it zoned as?
Just agriculture.
Just ag?
Just ag land, correct?
It's being proposed as being rural holding after, as part of this.
As part of the annexation, it would be, correct. The comprehensive plan calls it for a mixed-use opportunity.
And there's a process to get, to go through all that, isn't there? I mean, I don't understand how the transition works from agriculture to rural holding and what that means, and then separate to that, then there would be a process to zone it for mixed use, is that how that would go, or?
Rural holding is essentially the transition zoning, essentially when properties are annexed to the city until a final zoning classification is assigned to them, rural holding is what would be assigned to this as part of an annexation ordinance. Certainly, there's a development process that would be necessary to go through for layout and rezoning and, and development scenarios, but that's not, you know, at this point. There, there's no detail for that.
Thank you.
How many, how many acres of rural holding does the city have so far?
I don't think we have a calculated acreage of rural holding. The previous lands that he annexed last year remains in rural holding, I believe. There may be some down in the southern area. No, actually not, I'm sorry, maybe not in the southern area. Actually, the Ely Farm, if you will, along the river, that was annexed many years ago, that, I believe that still remains in rural holding.
And Leonard?
Leonard's, actually Leonard's has some of it that's been rezoned, but much of it probably is still. There's a detailed neighborhood plan for the Leonard Track that's been incorporated as part of the comprehensive plan.
All right.
Yeah, we haven't had any conversations that I'm aware of as far as development from Leonard's or Ely's at this point.
I have a, a question about a, the information from Dunn regarding where they state they have reached out to the city of Stoughton regarding a boundary agreement. What do we know about that?
There's been a couple conversations about things in general, and one of the things that came up was the idea of trying to have a boundary agreement, and then they followed up by sending us a copy of an agreement that they have with McFarland, but we haven't had any meetings to discuss that. We haven't had any direction or any conversations with either this group or the council, or whether that's something that we would want to pursue, and, and I think there would be, at least for myself, some sort of a, a learning curve to understand what a boundary agreement's, what, you know, the advantages or disadvantages may be for us and for the township, and how that would work. So I would say the conversations that have taken place have been just in passing while we've talked about other issues. Certainly, land preservation is important to the township. I think there's some belief that with annexation, that really puts in a city in a, in a better place to determine what the future use of that property would be, rather than having the township determine what that growth might look like, especially for the, the gateway to the city.
If I can just highlight one thing about the common border we have with the town of Dunn right now, just to graphically show people so that they're aware of where the city limits, or where the city shares a potential boundary. County B on the northern part of the screen, or north, top side of the screen here at the bank, down fifty-one to Rutland Dunn Town Line Road. Rutland Dunn Town Line Road is the southern border of the town of Dunn, so currently we share, if you will, kind of the Highway fifty-one stretch from Rutland Dunn Town Line Road up to County B as a common boundary.
So is that a written or an unwritten boundary, or what would you call it?
Well, that's, that's true municipal boundary, so the city limits, the city limits currently extend to the west side of the Leonard Farm, if you will, so along the east side of fifty-one is all within the city limits, where we, where we share a municipal boundary with the town of Dunn. Town of Dunn is everything west of Highway fifty-one and north of Rutland Dunn Town Line Road.
Thank you. Yeah, I'd actually be open to hearing what their thoughts are. I mean, I know we're the, kind of the gorilla on this one, since we're the city, but since they have expressed interest or concern here, that says that they've reached out to Stoughton, and they would appreciate an opportunity to work on a boundary agreement, and not really knowing myself personally much about boundary agreements.
Yeah, and I don't know where that.
It would be a nice learning process.
I don't know where that conversation begins, if it would begin here, or if it would begin at the council level, I'm not even sure how that would work.
Well, certainly, any type of agreement has to have a benefit to both sides, and the city would have to understand what benefits there are to the city, and the, the town would have to do the same. Certainly, this corridor is shown in our comprehensive plan to become part of the city. Their interest in preservation of, of property and conservation easements is well understood with it throughout the town of Dunn. Likely not particularly at this time for this location, but would the conversation start with a boundary agreement right where the boundaries join right now, or would there be some opportunity anticipated for the city to have orderly development to expand? Cities are afforded extraterritorial jurisdiction to plan out a mile and a half from our community borders for that reason. Actually, fourth-class cities can go out, or if third-class cities, if we did a few more things, could plan out three miles if we wanted to. But certainly, this is a common shared boundary right now, so it's well within that mile and a half for the city to contemplate becoming part of the community. You know, if, if this property was in the city, much like the other ones that are that are undeveloped, the city really holds the cards as to how and when that gets developed. If it's not in the city, whatever development opportunities are afforded within those towns would potentially exist, I just don't know what they may or may not be.
Thanks. I'm not sure, I have no experience at all in any of this, but from what I'm hearing, we have an experienced buyer who wishes to buy the land, and the idea of bringing up that we should pre-decide what he'd be able to do with the land at some future time, I think is inappropriate, we'd certainly, I would say, we would wish, for your sake, that you fully understand whatever the, you know, decision have to be made when he makes the decision how to use the land, but I don't, I'm not sure we want to get into the question now of whether we should approve how he's going to, how it's going to be used, or why it would be used. These are, you know, as long as the supplicant, I guess, understands clearly that, you know, there's certain restrictions that apply, and then he'll have to go by those when he comes to that position.
So for clarification, you already own the land, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, see, he's already purchased the land.
Okay. I didn't know that.
Yeah. So what he, I think what he's looking at doing is just having it annexed into the city, so at some point, when he's ready to develop it, he has other development he's currently involved in, and when that, you know, development has reached a point, I think this would be the, potentially another step for him, and all that's going to be, you know, based on the economy and everything else that's going on, and then to try to coordinate at least some of the public improvements with the DOT at the point where they're doing some highway work, and I think that's why Bob's here now, and I know he's had multiple conversations. I've been a part of a couple of them with the DOT to try to get our ducks in a row, so we can look at intersections and connection points and, and access points now before we get too deep into this thing. So I think that's what, what he's trying to do, and I, I think it's beneficial for us to do that.
Okay. If I can just speak to, you mentioned public utilities, can I speak to?
Sure.
In order for this area to be served, even this current piece, or his, his piece that was annexed last year, or even the Leonard Farm, those areas currently are not in the urban service area, and would need to go, undergo kind of a rigorous design process in order to identify what types of sanitary sewer, water, stormwater, all of those regional items that would need to be evaluated, as opposed to looking at one small tract. This would certainly open up the opportunity to evaluate it on a, if you will, a little more holistic viewpoint to evaluate those systems, because even if a small piece comes in, that would also have to undergo those types of evaluations. This broadens kind of that assessment to make it more complete, if you will.
Yeah, and just to follow up on that, when you're talking utilities and especially water, it's really beneficial to have kind of a longer-term picture, so when you're designing these things, you only have to design them once, because ultimately, they want a lot of that stuff to, to loop around, and even with the electricity now, we want to create some redundancies, so if a system fails, we have a backup, and by doing this at a larger scale like this, that gives us kind of the opportunity to see how that would look like, even if it is developed in phases, at least we know at the end game exactly what the infrastructure would look like.
I also have a, I'm not sure if this is actually a reasonable question to ask, and if it isn't, then you can tell me that it's not. I'm, I'm curious about that sliver that's just across from Highway B, which is, I think it's a, like a ranch, horse farm, or that, that.
Actually, about two-thirds of that will go away with the roundabout. When the roundabout goes in that intersection, the, I think, correct me if I'm rodding Rodney, but at least half of it, to two-thirds, goes away with the proposed roundabout.
Of this area here, is it? Phil, just to make sure, you're, I was talking about this particular parcel of land?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, the proposed roundabout shifts the right of way to the west, or this intersection, so the roundabout physically gets positioned farther to the west than its current location of, with County Highway B. So much of this would be consumed by that process.
Okay. And actually, now that I'm looking at this, maybe another piece that I was actually having in my mind might actually be farther north on fifty-one.
Yeah, I think you're.
Which is that piece that's for sale. Currently, there's a large for-sale sign up there, I think, that's a.
Yeah.
Farm of some sort.
I believe that's the piece that's off the screen, well, not off the screen, but outside of the petition area. I believe that's principally this, this area here.
Okay. And will a, going back to the other piece that's directly across from B, once the DOT does what they're going to do with the roundabout, is that going to create some sort of little rectangular island of Dunn?
So, it's, it's hard to say how this might get included in future development. Maybe the DOT actually ends up having to buy this entire piece, I, I don't know, but as part of their acquisition, they have to evaluate access and the like into this existing parcel, so that may impact how this piece remains after their acquisition process is complete.
Okay. That's nothing that's controlled by us, that's all DOT that decides what that is?
Yeah, they're, they're in charge of their design of the ride, the roadway, and they're, they have a real estate group that has to deal with that, the city doesn't get involved in the acquisition of that. You know, depending on circumstances, maybe that piece becomes part of the city and gets developed as part of an orderly development around that roundabout location.
You know, Bob, do you know what, how much that little bit is that's in there?
With the long driveway and that little bit, it's about two-point-two acres.
Okay.
Approximately.
Just make sure, Barb. Just one last question for, just because of the discussion with our relationship as a city with the town of Dunn, I'm just kind of curious if a short delay in acting on the annexation would cause any difficulty for, from your perspective, either in working with the DOT on, on their plans for engineering of the corridor, or any other plans you've got going on? I mean, if, if we would say that we wanted to postpone this long enough to have that conversation about a, a border agreement with the town of Dunn, would that would create any difficulties for you?
No, no, it's not going to create any difficulties. I mean, we, you know, I think if, if it's reasonable within thirty days, that'd probably be fine.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd, I'd be much more comfortable discussing with Dunn, just to see what their thoughts are, since I'm not familiar with this process, actually having been on, not on planning very long, or, you know, really being familiar with the boundary agreement, how that works or anything like that, I'd be interested in pursuing that.
Certainly have a conversation with them. I'm, I'm going to go out on a limb and say it's more likely would take more than thirty days, you know, to go through a process like that, based just on the one document I saw, because you're going to have, you know, attorneys and everybody else involved at the end of the day in order to agree to a document like that, and public hearings, I would imagine, and those types of things, so. But we can certainly, you know, bring them in and start the discussion.
Is, is there an inkling of what they're looking for?
I haven't spoken to them recently, but years ago, the conversation was about not expanding the city into the town, and of course, you know, towns are, towns generally are trying to be in preservation mode, and I don't think that would be unlike them. I think you recognize the correspondence that's in the packet, they're, they're essentially opposed to the annexation request. I don't think it's different than other town, city borders where you have conflict of goals and interests. As, as I kind of indicated before, the city would have to analyze what benefit, what the agreement would be, need to say for us, as the town would need to see what it says for them. Conversations in the past were, were very protective of current boundary limits, when we had conversations with the other towns and Dunn, it wasn't really trying to anticipate the city growing much, if any at all, from the current boundaries at that point. So maybe they're open to having some type of reasonable distance to anticipate being annexed to the city? I, I don't know if that's currently, I'm just going from the flavor of their, their objection to the annexation as it's written now.
It, it just seems to me that at least this stretch here would be a natural that we would want to include into the city, and that, you know, B or somewhere near the connection of B would be a natural border, might be just a little bit before, a little bit beyond it, but that would be kind of the natural point for a while, and then the same thing going the other way on one thirty-eight, you know, because there's a township in that direction as well. And I think what we've seen is that the townships, you know, through land preservation has, has used some other methods in order to do land preservation without having border agreements. That doesn't mean that we wouldn't. That doesn't mean that we wouldn't consider them, but I think they have other tools in the bag that they've already been using, and I'm sure they will continue to use going forward. So on this particular one, you know, I don't know, I don't know if I would even, I don't know if I would consider a border agreement on this piece of property anyway, because we've already got the other side. It would make sense that this side would be within the city as well, in my view.
And I think the other thing that is kind of a little bit of a timeline for us is to take a look at the whole entire picture, especially with the land we annexed last year and this whole piece for stormwater research, as to what we can really do with Virgin Lake, because the piece we annexed last year affects Virgin Lake and everything up there. And this particular piece that we're talking about also flows to Virgin Lake. So we're trying to get a real good eye on what needs to be done with water management here, stormwater management. That's why I'd like to not prolong it any longer than we have to.
Yeah, I mean, I think you can hopefully understand and respect that there's a fair amount of financial commitment that's already going in in order to get to this place, but to really investigate what would need to be done in the future in order to have an orderly development out there. And if we delay the annexation, it really delays the ability to do that work as well. And I know Bob would like to at least, you know, see what he's up against as far as the stormwater and what that might look like and what that might cost. So he's in a better position to see whether or not he even wants to develop it. He doesn't necessarily have to. If it's cost prohibitive, he can continue to, you know, let it operate as farmland if that's a decision he has to make. But he has to get to a certain place before he can invest the money in order to have those answers.
Because I think as far as the DOT's timeline, I think from that informational meeting of a number of weeks ago at the high school, made it sound like their plan for 51 is 2020's sometime undefined, if I recall correctly.
Yeah, I think the suggestion was is maybe the roundabouts would come 2024-ish, probably at the earliest, which is a few years out, but it'll come quicker than we might think. And then the rest of it would be phased in. But I would think that that roundabout on B and the one they're contemplating on AB, and then there's one on Exchange Street near McFarland, those three that would probably want to knock off at the same time is my guess. And they're working toward that. And once they publish it next year, then they have to have a funding plan in place in order to, you know, to meet the commitment.
From the conversations I had with the DOT, and Tim, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but their timeline is to have the plans pretty well finalized all the way out to County B by end of August of next year. So they're looking for feedback basically from the municipalities, you know, within the next three or four months, so they can work through that timeline that they're trying to get to the end of August next year, so they can have plans finalized.
Any other questions, or what do you guys, what's your pleasure here, what we'd like to do?
I think of this, were any other piece of land we might consider to slow down on it, but because I think this one will kind of act as a linchpin in transportation, at least for access to the city itself, then the sooner that we can get it under the city's control would be better.
Any other thoughts? Otherwise, you know, the question is, is there you guys at a place where you want to make a recommendation to the council? And I think if you do, it's, is it through ordinance? Is that what I saw in here?
Yeah, there's an annexation ordinance, correct.
Okay, so does that mean it would go through council twice?
It does.
Okay. So basically, it would be on two council agendas as well, even, you know, if it comes out of here with that recommendation. And the question is, is are you guys comfortable with that, or?
I'm still, I'm just going to restate it. I think I would like to just see what Dunn is thinking, since they asked for a chance to. So I would like to make a motion that we, I'm not even sure what the motion would be, to discuss with Dunn, to reach out to Dunn regarding a boundary agreement, just to get more information from them without, you know.
Are you suggesting we include this particular piece of property in that discussion, or is that separate to this property?
Include this piece of property in the discussion, just for research.
So postpone, so you want to postpone the vote until Dunn has been contacted and discussions have gone forward?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
So that's a motion, and we have a second by Mieski. Did you catch it, Rodney?
I'm needing clarification, just so I understand it. Postpone action on the annexation request until when?
Well, until such time as we've been able to communicate with Dunn what their.
Understand these?
Yes, until we are able to understand what their needs are regarding the annexation of this property.
Until such time as we have been able to understand their needs for this property. I guess needs and concerns would probably also be a good addition there.
Regarding the annexation of the property.
Yes.
Well, not just that property, but.
Well, including that property.
I guess if I could just comment.
Sure.
I don't want to delay this any longer than it has to. I mean, so I'll put a time limit on it, but I think as a plan and commission member, I would like to act at the next meeting, one way or the other, on the annexation, but in the interim, just to find out what they had in mind. Because, I mean, this particular annexation is consistent with our comprehensive plan, and we have every right as a city to annex it. And so it's more, in my opinion, not necessarily with respect to this parcel, it's with respect to what it is they had in mind by a boundary agreement. And I just, I would be more comfortable just knowing what they were thinking as a courtesy, knowing that right now I'm going to vote yes on this annexation. I mean, if that makes sense? Because it's consistent with our comp plan. But in the interest of good faith between municipalities, if there's no loss in a 30-day wait, just so that we know, are they talking about a boundary agreement that would be, you know, a couple parcels up, that they're just saying, we kind of want to have an idea where we're going to kind of stop? Or, you know, what it is that they have in mind, just so we know whether or not we want to pursue as a municipality a boundary agreement down the road, or if we say, you know, that's not something we're interested in?
That sound reasonable to you guys?
Yes, very much so.
So does the motion now include a 30-day, or not 30-day, anticipated action at the next plan commission, or does it not?
Yes.
Motion or in the second or?
Okay.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments about that motion? Okay.
Okay. I think I got it.
Do you think you have the spirit of it?
I, yep, I believe I do.
Okay. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. So we'll keep in touch, and then we'll get you on the next agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Item number seven, we have a request for some signage at 101 West Main Street.
I don't know if the screen is doing justice to the colors, but your packet contains the material related to this request for projecting sign at this address. It's within the downtown design overlay district. I'm not sure, are you the applicant?
Yeah.
Okay, so if there are questions, there's the applicants here to speak to them. I don't think staff, yeah, staff had our letter in there as well, so if you have any questions on that, we can certainly speak to that.
So this is a building that's in the downtown overlay district. It's not a local landmark.
Correct.
Is still therefore under the ordinance that comes here.
That's correct.
Okay.
In my looking through it, it looks consistent. I agree with city staff that it's consistent with what, the way the ordinance is written and presented. I would like to comment, one of my thoughts, and I drove by the building and I see that there's the lettering in the, on the windows already. And in looking at what we see on the screen and in our handouts, my only concern was, and this is not anything that I would rule against the proposal, it's just I'm a little worried that that font and the text might not be bold enough. I don't know, but it looked like in the window it was. So I'm assuming it might just be the way it printed a little bit, but I know you kind of lose the family dental when you step back and look at it.
Right.
So I just would want to, you know, caution that it would be great to have that bold enough.
Hold that out a little bit.
Yeah, so that when you're driving by, because the key thing with those projecting signs is when you're walking and driving by, that you can actually read the font.
Sure. Yeah, you're welcome to come on up and introduce yourself and tell us what you're doing here.
I'm Darren, here on behalf of Dr. Daniel Tatahe. He's the owner of Stoughton Dental. It used to be Lifetime Family Dentistry, so if you're all aware, that corner there facing Main and Division. I do believe that family dental will kind of pop out a little more. Right now, it's hard to tell. It looks really small, actually. I can't even barely read it. I'll go back to sign guy and make sure that's, you know, something within 30 feet if you're in your car, like that you can still see it. From here, it definitely looks like if we could get them a little bit more bold, or maybe shift the Stoughton lettering up a little bit, make it a little bigger, but yeah, it should be, should be good.
So you work for them, or?
Yes, yep. So Dr. Tatahe owns Mercy Dental Group, and Stoughton is one of the offices in the group. I'm the director of the group.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
All right. Are there any other questions? All right, somebody wanting to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the projecting sign for 101 West Main Street.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that carries.
Great.
Yep, thanks for your patience tonight.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate it. All right. Item number eight is we're going to introduce a preliminary plat for the Meadows at Kettle Park West. I guess the Meadows is the name for the next phase, and looks like we have two familiar faces here tonight. Are you here to present, observe, or answer questions?
I may not answer questions, but just a little presentation.
All right, come on up, Jim.
Really not a presentation per se, but it's to bring you up to speed, you know, when we started this conversation in earnest a year ago as to the next phasing of Kettle Park West and development. We went through extensive discussions on the park location, reconfigured land use. And subsequently, went through a comprehensive plan amendment to incorporate this arrangement of land uses and densities. There's roughly the same time, a final plat for the first, that very top part came through, and you've looked in, taken action on that. We're working through the final staff comments there. And then parallel, you know, immediately following that, this is the preliminary plat for the balance of the property that had been part of the Kettle Park West project since day one. This is the majority of the Maybee farm that was annexed back in 2012 or 11 or something like that. So this is the culmination of that planning effort. The project is, you can see, is consistent with everything we've talked about. This is an introductory meeting to get it on the docket for action in some kind of complimentary fashion to all the other discussions going on with the city council.
Yeah, Jim, certainly, I will include you continuing the discussion, but for the commissioners, I thought it was good to outline kind of the timelines and expectations. Preliminary plats have a certain statutory timeline for action by the city council, and I'm just going to lay out some dates so that you're aware of kind of the anticipated progression of this plat. The plan commission is being introduced to the project or the preliminary plat at this meeting. Council is going to receive just a cursory introduction as well on the 22nd of this month. On November 11th, the next plan commission meeting, we're planned to hold a public hearing. Part of the preliminary plating process is a public hearing. That will be noticed for the November 11th meeting. Potential plan commission action or not, but certainly a discussion with the community about the project at that point. Plan commission action could take place either on the 11th or December 9th, which would be their subsequent meeting, and council potentially taking action on the plat in January. In order for that to happen, actually, the developer would actually have to request an extension, because given the timelines that are before us, statutorily, council would actually have to take action at the November, the second meeting in November, which I think is Thanksgiving week. Is that the 26th or so of November? And again, that may or may not be attainable, but certainly in order to meet the statutory 90-day, I believe it's 90-day submittal requirement, or action requirement, that would be necessary. The timeline that I've laid out, I think, offers a little more latitude in public discussion, if that's to occur, in that we would have the plan commission holder hearing on the 11th, consider it potentially for action, and if not, that date on the, in the December plan commission meeting, taking action on the preliminary plat with council to follow. So that's just a cursory overview of the schedule. Dennis, did you have any comments or thoughts related to that?
Well, just on the plat extension, we understand we're running against some timeframes here, so we'd be willing to give an extension that kind of follows your schedule there.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Again, for the commissioners, it's really just your first opportunity to see the official plat, the official preliminary plat of the area. Certainly, as Jim alluded to, there's been a number of conversations in the past and up to this date, but that is continuing the next phase of the dialogue. The other aspect of this plat, I think, that was important for us to start to collaborate on is the small lot residential. And on the screen, you'll recall, a substantial part of the comprehensive plan change was to address and acknowledge these alley-loaded, single-family detached properties. Why that's important for us to discuss, there will be a rezoning request at some point to articulate specific requirements within this planned development area of the plat, so the smaller lot, single-family, alley-loaded areas. And I think it was imperative to at least begin the dialogue about what the expectations are from, and I think that the developer is interested in understanding if there's aesthetic, landscaping setback, issues that would be prudent to consider as part of their application, now might be the time to at least begin that dialogue. And I'll just highlight a few of the things that are kind of anticipated as part of this preliminary plat. Initially, it suggested that be a 12-foot front yard setback in the event that there is a porch or an unenclosed porch, a porch with a roof, but an unenclosed porch. Many of your older, I'll just call them more traditional neighborhoods, have homes closer to the front sidewalk, and the interaction with the public is. and the interaction with the public is, is what's encouraged there. If there is no porch or covered roof porch, it would be twenty feet to the, to the front building setback line. Again, these are open for discussion, but that's kind of the, some of the standards that have at least talked about. Maybe I can find a better plan to, I'm sorry, I know I can find a better plan. I'm sorry, but I think this one helps to begin to show that. I was talking, when I should have been showing you a graphic. For example, as we talked about along the front, this is an example of a concept along Oak Opening Drive, where if you've got a covered porch, the setback would be twelve feet. If you did not have a covered porch, it'd be twenty to the, to the front setback line.
Be clear, that's consistent with your SR six zoning ordinance?
Correct.
This isn't a new standard?
So it would be optional to build them with or without, and you could add it later?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Realistically, the designs that are fit within this style, this character of neighborhood, there's an integrated porch that's across from the house, and whether it extends to the full length or it's partial, but it's an open porch, that's the whole focus of having that pedestrian-friendly engagement with the street.
Using that philosophy, I think, was what we anticipate being mirrored along the rear, or the multi-use path. So on the, on that one section of the plat, there's not a public street in front of the area. So for these lots that face the rear open space and pond area, for example, we would anticipate those having a front street frontage setback consideration. So if they had a covered porch, it'd be twelve feet allowed to be off the setback line, or off the property line. If it did not have that, it would be a twenty-foot setback. The other discussion point is, or one other discussion point is parking. These oftentimes are anticipated to have either a detached or an attached garage, but there's certainly seems to be some interest in having the ability to also have vehicles park in the driveway, if you will, off of the private alley, so it's not encumbering the private driveway thoroughfare. So there's some, they'll be looking at that as to how to maybe accommodate that as a setback from the paved alley. Maybe there's a twenty or twenty-two foot setback from the pavement edge of the alley, if you will. We also had some initial conversations about side-load garages or garages off of this internal entryway, if you will. And I think the ordinance and maybe the character is anticipating, as shown, all the driveways would actually be coming off the alley, not off of the entranceway, if you will, or off of a side street that maintains that character related to the alley, and all of those would be loaded as such. Public terrace trees would certainly be required. Again, seeking feedback, but certainly public terrace trees are required. You can recognize the ability to landscape on these sites is diminished, but it's not saying there can't be any landscaping, but certainly the public terrace trees are going to be a requirement as part of a subdivision anyhow. There's some discussion about, is there interest in having a minimum first floor height? In many of the older sections of our community, and maybe we're not trying to recreate that, but certainly acknowledging there might be an interest in having the first floor elevation, say eighteen inches or two feet above the main, of the center line or the grade level of the street. Anticipating, if you will, steps to create a kind of a characteristic that requires or encourages some type of porch, and maybe get a different feel as opposed to have all that grade, grade openings. Maybe the developer will contemplate how to interchange house plans instead of having maybe all the house plans be the identical. You've seen in some subdivisions where there's that occurring. There's others where they have a rotating stock or ability to change or articulate buildings differently, so they're not all monotone in, in small, small groups. They might contemplate that. Fencing is something we've, we've heard a lot about as a commission lately, and, you know, I think that there's an acknowledgement that there might be a desire to have some fencing here. But the commissioners and the developer may contemplate how and where that looks and feels. Is there some, some areas that in the front, maybe it's a certain limit, additional limitation above and beyond what our current ordinances allow, or not? But those are the types of things that we, we should contemplate. I'm going to try to pull up just a few pictures of, I don't know how successful we'll be here. This one shows essentially, I think you'll probably acknowledge that most of these probably have an eighteen inch to two-foot elevation above street grade. All of them have steps up of some sort. And that doesn't mean you still can't have ramps or accommodations for ADA in certain units and how to accommodate that, but it, it doesn't have them all at, right at the base grade of the street in this scenario.
Hey Rodney?
Yeah.
Can I, if I can interrupt you for a second while we're on that graphic right there?
Yeah.
One thing I'm noting there is that there is a variety of structures there as opposed to twenty houses in a row that are all not exactly the same, except maybe for color or maybe, you know, some developments I see where there's, looks like there's ten or twenty houses in a row, and they're all essentially the same color, and I'm just like, man, how can those people even tell which house is their house? Because they really look the same, so something like that is preferable to.
Do you really want to focus on different group pictures? And they don't all have to be different, but at least you have to have some variety. You see here a, a single story, or a story and a half, and a two-story, and another two-story table. So it seems some visually from the street.
These examples here, what would you say the setback is, if you were to guess?
I think this is probably very close to that ten to twelve foot off of the porch. If, if it did not have a porch, it would, it would probably be closer to what we, we call as a twenty-foot standard here.
And how about the height?
That, I think that's, first floor elevation is probably similar to what we talked about, eighteen inches to two feet above curb grade or something to, all of these have some steps.
Two aspects, one, the character, and it partially depends upon the gradient of the grade and the terrain in the area. Here we're dealing with relatively flat property disturbance. You want it to feel like you're coming in and entering into a porch, so you want one or two steps maybe up to the house. If there's more terrain and grade, then I'd say we also need to be thinking about maintaining the first floor of all the houses like within a separate structure. So again, if you're going into somebody's house, you're really high on the air. But here I don't think we have to worry about that, because like the old, the lot itself is really flat.
And one might ask, why are we even having this conversation here as opposed to another development? Well, this is a, this is a new setting for an area within the city of Stoughton. The small lot, single-family detached is, is not uncommon in the county or in the area, but to us it's new, and having some attention to some of these details, we think are probably prudent in, in moving it forward and establishing the character of something we desire.
Could you guys remind me on, on sections of the development like this? Was, was your vision to just sell the lot and let the individuals that purchased the lot develop and build their own house? Or were you guys going to build the actual units and then sell the land and the housing?
I think both could happen out there. We certainly will sell lots, we'll have covenants restrictions, that they'll have to build, you know, with similar amenities as everybody else would. But they'll have the ability to put their own style in it.
Okay.
To some degree. So yeah, we're not, we're not trying to do one where we got one, one house and it goes over blocks.
Okay.
We really want them right.
So in some cases you'll do the build-out, in other cases you'll just sell the lot?
Some cases what you might do is we might sell to a builder that will do multiple, you know, units out there. We won't do unbuilding ourselves.
Got it, got it.
Mayor pointed out a, a very good question. Our zoning and the planned development scenario will establish certain standards that we as a city feel are appropriate. They may have some additional covenants that they would impose privately on, on the development. Maybe it's something to do with something in the, I don't even know, interior or clothesline pole, you know, certain things that we might not as a city feel compelled to regulate, but they may have some additional interest in doing so privately on, on the covenant side. So that's the nuance here.
So then on, on our end, what is the process to establish that? Is that here?
Yeah, so the applicant will be making a, a request to rezone areas of this to planned development. In the planned development district, you establish the standards for that zoning class setbacks, and some of the other criteria that we've, we've outlined here can be imposed on that particular district. And once they're imposed, they're still required to meet those standards. They may, in addition to those, have some additional privately maintained restrictions that would be in addition to that. But yes, the rezoning creates the district with the standards in the planned development district, so it's a rezoning ordinance that gets recommended from Plan Commission to council. And then there's two readings because it's an actual ordinance to rezone.
So then, more than likely you'll take the list of the items and send them out with some ranges of what our current ordinances are and how they may or may not relate to this development for this group to consider, is that what you're thinking, or?
Yeah, part of their application will say, your SR six district, for example, already requires setbacks twelve and ten, or twelve and twenty. And we, we are further recommending that for our PD, but they may have a scenario where they say, well, in this particular section of homes, maybe we think it's better to have a seven-foot setback for whatever reason. And that would be articulated in their application. And then we could discern the difference between what the zoning, the traditional zoning are, standards are versus what they might be proposing. I know that we have more pictures, continue.
Go ahead, Mr. Selsinger.
Sure, just a, a different question, the back of the house. I know we talked about alleys before, but who would be responsible for clearing the alley? Each individual owner, or would, would the city, or would they hire a private contractor?
We as a city, at this point, have said that would be under private maintenance responsibility. They would maybe be able to speak to whether that's a homeowners', I anticipate some type of homeowners' association.
Homeowners' Association for those, for those.
Yeah, for the maintenance of the private areas.
You know, just from my own experience, and these aren't luxury homes, obviously. It seemed very practical, but there's going to be people that just won't do it. And the other thing we brought up about the alleys, are they wide enough for fire trucks? And then I guess the other question, I'm not trying to be overly detailed, but if each person does his own, is there going to, and you have a heavy snow, are you going to have a place to pile snow?
Alleys will be all cleared by, by somebody hired by the homeowners' association, all done at one time.
Oh, okay.
So it's, individual owners will not be clearing snow.
And so your second part of the question, do alley design right now has space outside the curb for snowstorm?
Okay. And also for fire and emergency access maneuverability. Pavement width, I believe, was sixteen feet without parking anticipated on the, kind of the alleyway. And we just talked or suggested that the, the distance that would be behind each garage would accommodate a vehicle to park outside of the garage without encumbering the alley. At least that's what we think is a reasonable point of discussion. Even if you have a vehicle in the garage, it seems likely that on occasion there'd be one parked behind it.
My personal experience, you go through old communities where the garage doors, like, go off the alley? There's been so many defender winters, you know, and that's why we would like to get that space between the edge of the alley pavement and the garage door space. So a reason that's banned, either as a place to park, or at least as you're backing out, you're able to at least turn your head and see what's coming up and down the street.
Right.
Particularly with the rear bumper of your car, and there's a liability backhand to some of the alleys.
Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
So for tonight then, with this in our pocket, it's just to start the discussion. There's no action that's going to happen tonight.
That's right.
Yes.
It's an introduction, we're trying to spark the conversation related to some of these items. The developers here are listening to try to take any input that the commissioners may have related to aesthetic standards or site standards that would be applicable to these, these lots. This one here shows another scenario.
A scenario, this is what the alley would look like from the public street, from down the alley. And you can see there's opportunities for, now in this particular case, I don't know how the garage doors would be that post, but there is opportunity for landscaping along the alley, space for utility, transformer boxes or easements along the alley. So that gives you a little bit of a flavor for what this could look like. I don't know if the other pictures came in. There are a couple of examples I can point you to, places.
I'm going to try to find them. I'm going to try harder to find them. This doesn't show the alley, but this shows that porch scenario.
Are there any of these housing types that have been, that the neighborhood's been established for say two to five years or so, and do you know where any of those might be that?
Yeah. Several of the good examples, one is Smith's Crossing, which is one of a couple of homes out here.
It's Sun Prairie.
Smith's Crossing here in Sun Prairie, just off, you go off 151 and get off of Ryaner Road. You can all see the neighborhood, it's where the, you can see the YMCA, you drive along.
You can go to, off of Cottage Grove Road, Great Danas, back in there?
Oh yeah, right.
There's a, there's another alley scenario, this is, this is more of the size of the alley probably than where it's contemplated and where the cell parker is. It's got a, you know, ribbon curb on either side of it, the garage doors would probably be a little bit further back. I don't know if you see here, but you can see the landscape when you go down the alley. It's not a dust flip.
I think it would be interesting to talk to some of the homeowners that have lived in them for a number of years and see what sort of pitfalls and benefits are, that they've seen from it.
Yeah, this is on Galileo Drive in Madison. You know where the Great Dane restaurant is on the east side? It's in New York, it's down in Illinois. Back in the day, it was kind of different.
So with, in this scenario, and you have a homeowner, just to sort of nitpick, I guess, or get at technicality, if the homeowners' association is clearing the snow or maintaining the actual alley, how about the apron or driveway leading up to the garage? Then that individual homeowner is responsible, would be responsible for that?
It's the, the snow removal contract that the association establishes. Part of the, part of your job is our snow removal contractor to clear off between the alley and the garage door. Or it could be going individual homeowners.
It's not unlike condominium associations working through snow and often yard, yard care, but certainly snow removal in condo associations.
It's similar to a public alley that's in place right now. Snowplow goes down into the city power, and it looks like you're doing a house, you have to plow through the garage doors, you have to take out the snow at the drive-in. It doesn't have to be entirely contracted, then, unless the homeowners' association is on it to do that. form and do that.
I was just, just brought it up because, you know, thinking about the impending season that we're going to have coming upon us soon, and, you know, somebody decides, well, I'm going to move all the snow from my driveway to the alley, because that's just easier for me, and then the, you know, and somebody's paying a service, and somebody's not contributing, and, but that's picky stuff.
I think we all do it, we all, I still go my driveway, I just put it in the tree because we often do it before the plow comes.
You get a notice if you do that in town here.
Yeah, but I knew the snow was hard, so. You would tell me every time.
Mr. Barbour? I, I know that at an earlier meeting, and I can't remember if it was one of the, the commission meetings, or if it was one of the public meetings, but these pictures are all very helpful. But I know we had asked whether or not there was the ability to measure the distances back on some of these pictures, and I know you guys had said that you were going to try to do that, so that when we look at a picture, then we know, well, this is a seven-foot setback, and this one's a twelve-foot setback.
I did not do that. I estimated on a couple of pictures, just based on the number of expansion joints involved.
Yep.
This is, one of them, this one might be, and I can't remember exactly, it's about fifteen feet to four, sixteen feet to four, I don't remember.
I think it'll be, it'll help us have a serious conversation about those setbacks if we have a few of the pictures where it's actually either based on your, your eye, but have it keyed out, so that we can look at the picture and say, okay, now, this is what a, this is what a ten-foot setback's going to look like, this is what a eight-foot setback.
We started with the twelve, because that's where the origin is.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions, or anything you'd like to see between now and our next meeting in relation to this? You want more pictures, more measurements, or a map to where to drive to, to look at them live?
Well, I think we can certainly enumerate some of the subdivisions by name and communicate those to the commissioners if they're interested in, in going to some of those locations.
You can probably, you know, get on a line and, and map them out that way, too, if you don't have time to get there.
But if you want a really old, established neighborhood, it'd be roughly in Madison, another area behind, or not, you can play, some of those, some of those, some of those , narrow streets, you know, that's, Sine Road, Woodford, we want, some of these are, those are, these are both good examples and bad examples, and we just have the framework here to encourage.
Smith's, Smith's Crossing, I think, is twenty-five-ish years old, at least portions of it, so that one's, that was probably one of the early ones.
The ones dressed up as Sine are brand new. If you go on Google Earth, you won't be able to get a street view, because they've not done a street view. They're all embedded.
So, we could, we could trick or treat these neighborhoods, and then while we're getting the candy, then we can ask if they like living there.
The advantage is, is definitely how, could the street be great?
It's reasonable, yeah.
What, what's the minimum distance between each structure that would be, depending on how the house was laid out on the property?
Your, your ordinance right now is seven or fourteen feet total side yard, that's minimum of six on one side or eight on the other. We do our example of, of seven. But we didn't, we started with what you already had in place.
Yeah, so it's fourteen, I think, is the minimum between structures, which I think that's shown on the screen there is probably even closer than fourteen.
I think, uh, Smith's Crossing might be narrower.
Yeah, could be, yeah.
So, we'll send you out a list of places where you can go to, then? Anything else you need, or if you do, between now and the next meeting, feel free to, to let us know, and we'll try to get you some information.
Before Halloween, I assume, right? You can send that out?
Yeah. Yeah, he's going to dress up as a developer.
There you go.
Is there anything else that you guys are seeking, or have any?
You know, this would help, if we wanted to get that conversation started up again, which we've been having a time to say.
I get it.
We need to get it out in favor. If you like this, or like this, my eyes are a bit.
Okay. Well, thanks for coming out, I'm sure we'll see you again. Yeah, less than five minutes before kickoff, so.
Good planning on the plan.
That's right. Okay, any future agenda items from anyone? Do you have anything?
I'm no.
Obviously, we're going to be talking to the township.
We'll have the devorick annexation request back on the plan commission.
Okay. Otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
By Robinson, is your second?
Second.
Second by Caravello, any discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.